Good evening, everyone. I've got a call the October 3rd, 2024 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order. Paige, could you do the roll call for us?
Dave Larson.
Present.
John Meyer.
Here.
Douglas Bunscooter.
Stephanie Gardner.
Here.
David Huser.
Here.
Kate Payne.
Here.
Kathy Olson.
All right. Thank you. All right. Item CA is the approval for tonight's agenda. I would ask for a motion.
So.
Second.
I want the agenda be approved as presented.
Approved as presented. Yes, absolutely. Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hearing none opposed, that motion passes. All right. Item D is the approval of our last meeting that we had, which was August 1st, 2024, to be approved.
I move that the minutes be approved as presented.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Hearing none, that motion passes as well. All right. So the next item is a public hearing. So what I'll do, just in case anybody hasn't done one of these before, so we'll open a public hearing. We'll ask that you come to the podium, state your name and address for us, address the commission with any questions or comments that you have, and then we'll close the public hearing and then we'll kind of have some discussion as the council here, as the commission, as we need to, and then we'll make a decision on that item.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Yes. On this item, I am a member of the St. Paul's Lutheran Church and School Property Committee and have been pretty detailed and have been fully involved in this item and developing it. And I just don't feel that I can be an objective person, not that I, you know, I just have been part of it too long. So I will be recusing myself and I'll go out in the hall and just don't forget to get me back when the next item comes up on the agenda. Okay?
As long as you stay in the hall and you don't forget to keep going out the door.
Okay. No, I'll leave my book here.
All right.
No.
I understand your respects and we have enough to still have a quorum without you, so. All right. So with John stepping out for a moment here, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing for item E, which is the Special Provisional Use Amendment for 301 First Street Northwest for a portable classroom. Is there anyone with us tonight that has any comments or would like to address the commission here? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and we'll move forward with our discussion as a commission. I had a question I hope we can discuss a little bit. Kate, maybe if you could pull up the site plan as well for the screen, if that's not too difficult, so some people can see as well. But so my question was just kind of, hopefully we can discuss and answer somewhat.
There it is. My screen's gone crazy.
It's an interesting color. So what I wasn't totally clear on, and I don't know if we know this answer or not, but the one thing I saw was what I assume is the accessibility ramp to the north side, I suppose in that view, how it kind of protrudes into the inbound lane. I didn't know if that was planned that way or if that was foldable, if that was just on private property, so it didn't really matter. I wasn't clear if there was any options.
And we've got a couple of representatives, so I will let them.
Perfect. If you could, we'd greatly appreciate some clarification there.
Ron Zelli, Director of Administration at St. Paul's, made the application for the special.
You're welcome.
And we were in a tight turnaround and getting the site plan revised because leadership of the congregation. I actually do have a site plan that switch backs the ramp going east out of there and will end just with an extra turn on the north and it will be less than the length of the building is our plan at this point. We thought that that would be able to be done after the site, after the approval process, but that came in actually after I had forwarded you the last one just before the agenda had to be out.
Okay. So it won't be as it's presented here?
No, there would be the ramp ending. It'll switch back to the east turnaround and come back and it'll end almost at the end of the currents platform.
Okay. Great. And maybe while you're here, the other question I had just kind of on a layout or the site plan side was the power proposal. Like, I understand there's no water in the.
At this point in time, we have not proceeded with how we will do that. Jerry Elsa Miller is a member of my church council and has intentions to visit with Waverly Light and Power about whether this will be separate service or whether we will need to connect to the current service within the school building. The short distance to the tunnel under the school would be our access point. We would trench to the building if we have to do that, if it does not come with a new service. Currently at Cary School, it is on separate service, and so that's why he wanted to have that conversation with Waverly Lake Power before we made any determination on that.
Okay. No, that's good for me.
The only question I have is, we start with Ron, you know, do we have, you know, what's your long-term agenda there, you know, because it's what the governor's done and I could create more. I just wonder how many might be in the future there, so it's.
I will simply tell you that the future is very cloudy and uncertain for us. This is to buy us a couple of years of space of time in order to make long-range decisions as far as whether we would need to do a building program that would somehow modify where we're at rather than doing. I do not envision another portable. This is, this came up very quickly as an opportunity. The deadline was approached and we literally had two and a half weeks to turn around and make a proposal without knowing a lot, and that's why we got the balls rolling in this direction as fast as we could. But literally, it's been a fairly, if you told me the first of August I was going to be buying a building and moving it to St. Paul's, I would have said, what are you talking about? Because it's literally been since then.
Well, I just, I would guess that might be some of the neighbors.
I would, I would concur that that would be some of the neighbors concerned. It would be part of our concern, too. We want to be a good downtown church and a community church, and we want to be one that is good in the neighborhood, too. So that is definitely not the long-term intention.
But thank you, Ron. I just, I'm just curious. I just wanted, you know, somebody asked, I don't know, maybe some of you have had that, somebody asked.
I have a couple of questions.
So with Dave's response here, real quickly, Bill, other zoning items would come into play, such as required number of parking spaces. With this one, they still meet those required number of parking spaces. If you start adding more on, you're not going to meet that, which is going to cause variances in other instances. So there's other zoning items.
You've got the board of adjustments, so.
Right.
But I mean, it could come up.
It could. It could. But yeah, just one fit on there well without asking for variances for other things.
Is there, if we approve this as a special provisional use, is there a time limit on it, or is it forever and a day that we approve this?
Um, I would have to look back at that code section we just changed. I believe you have to have the building permit within a year. And then if you satisfy that, then it's as long, if you take that off, if that use is no longer being used, it goes away. Then you'd have to reapply for a new one if you want to bring it back. I don't know if that's what you're asking.
I don't think that's what I'm asking. I think what I'm asking is if we approve this temporary loosely defined building, although it has footings that go four feet in the ground, do you, once it's there, they're making a big commitment to put in footings to make this thing not blow away. What, is it there forever conceivably by our approval or does it have a five-year commitment or time limit on it?
No, it would be there forever.
Yeah.
Okay. I asked that question because I know I've worked on projects in the city of Waterloo. They put time limits on it, where they said it had to be gone in X number of years and the school district had to react.
So.
In a certain time window.
As terms of a special provisional use, you're able to do things like that as a commission and board, but that's not something they asked or they don't want a time limit put on it.
Okay. And then my other question is really you, what grade levels are you going to put in here? There's no water. Is, I'm like.
The use of the facility has not been determined at this point in time. We are, we are exploring how we're going to use it. At Cary School is where it's been located. It's been grades four.
You're moving it from Cary over here?
It is the Cary building. It's been utilized this way since 2008 in that location without any plumbing in it. We.
Well, I can tell you that I heard a lot of complaints about no plumbing in it.
We also heard some good things about it, too. We are exploring lots of different things. We're not sure it's going to be used as grade classrooms. It might be used as our media center. It might be used as our Spanish room. It may be used as the auxiliary meeting space, so, and we'll take meeting, meeting space that we have in our current facility and turn it into classroom space. So all of those are being considered at this point in time, and none of them have been decided on at this point in time. Again, this has come up fairly quickly. We were actually in a study phase, thinking about two years from now when this became available to us, and that's why for the, for what we were going to be able to invest in it, we thought it was a good.
Right. It's convenient because Cary doesn't need it.
Yeah. Bartles has sold it to us, is actually Bartles.
Right. They gave, they purchased, sure.
And if I'm right, I believe the church and school are already a special exemption because they're in a residential. Is that not correct?
Correct. It's already a special provisional use. So anything added beyond that initial 25%.
That's why we're here, is for the additional.
Yep.
Okay. Was that both your questions? Okay. The only additional one that jumped out at me, I guess, was a lot of times when we talk special provisional uses, we kind of talk color and appearance and those sort of things. I'm not familiar with the condition of the one over at Cary, but can you talk to that a little bit? Is it?
It's a shingle, it's a Wausau home that was purchased by Waverly Shock Schools in 2008, moved to the Irving location.
Okay.
2008, we flooded. It never was used at the Irving location. It was put on footings high enough that it didn't flood. They actually moved two of those in. One of them, they moved then, and later in that year to Southeast School, and the other one, they moved to Cary School where it has resided. So the one that's sitting at Southeast School looks identical to it. It's kind of a beige or clay-colored siding, has doors on the sides where you saw the ramps were available, windows. It has end units that are heater, air conditioner, so those are on the ends of the building, shingle roof, approximately 18 feet high, 30 feet wide, and 55 feet long.
Okay.
Windows on all sides.
And overall condition?
I would put the overall condition of the home itself as good. Shingle roof, we will probably be replacing in the near future as it has probably almost reached its limit.
Okay.
We would, you know, either reskirt it or have concrete wall footings. We're still debating which way we're going to end up on that one, so it will have, it won't look like a mobile home sitting there. It will look like a house that has been moved in.
Okay. And then with, with the appearance, I guess, is there discussion, I don't see anything on the site plan, for any additional screening along like First Avenue Northwest there? I guess to the south of the side of the structure?
To the south?
It's within a fence line.
It's in our, it's, it's 12, well, 20 feet from the property line. It's inside our fence already that is there.
That's what I was, was thinking. Was there anything?
She pulled up a picture of what it looks like at Southeast.
Yep. That's a building, yeah.
That's what it looks like at Southeast School.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's handy. Has a lot steeper pitch than I imagined.
Yeah.
On the roof. Okay. So I guess no additional screening?
No, no, it'll be the side of the, of the building. That'll be the extra, the other access points for fire exit has to be accessible for exit there.
Okay. I guess, sorry, I was thinking between there and the street and like the.
Like a tree line or a fence line to block the view from the other side.
Correct. Yeah.
It's just our current street.
Yeah, okay.
Playground fence will remain.
I assume these are bushes or something?
I think there might be trees there.
Okay.
There is one tree that is dying on our property that is probably going to come down before we will move it into this location, yes. If you drive by, you're going to go, that isn't going to be a loss, because it is in pretty tough shape.
I have another question, but I want to make sure everybody has theirs done.
No, I am good. Stephanie, do you have anything? Your kid's turning.
So is, is the increased enrollment a direct result of the governor's decision?
That is a great question, and I like to address that one by actually, two years ago, before there was any word of the educational savings accounts, we were struggling with how we were going to be able to house, because our preschool had in it, at that point in time, 35 students that we thought will be enrolling in kindergarten, because either they had siblings that were already enrolled in our, in our K through six, or we had kids that were directly families of the congregation that we were pretty sure had talked about coming into that. So that number already had us looking at how we were going to create two sections of kindergarten two years ago. As a result, we were already in that expanding mode. Then they passed the educational savings account, which we know it did bring somewhere between six to 12 children to the, to us the first year.
That's half a classroom.
Half a classroom, spread over all the classes, of course.
Sure, I know.
We do believe we've picked up a few more. We don't know what the future holds. We don't know what the legislature holds as far as the future of those either, so we always are saying, we're basing it upon our best estimates right now. We are sure at this point, we need to add a second section of kinder, or a second grade for next year. We will have two sections of first grade and three sections of kindergarten.
I find it a little, maybe this isn't part of our purview, but it is interesting because there are brand-new elementary schools in the district with space available in them, and yet we're going to add a portable building to a house kids when there are perfectly good brand-new schools. So it's an interesting conversation in the scheme of Waverly, right?
And Waverly schools are excellent. They are excellent.
Okay.
I'm done. I don't have any other questions.
Any other discussion for our guests here? If not, okay. Thank you very much.
All right, gang. I move that, moved that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval of the Special Provisional Use Amendment at 301 First Street Northwest to City Council.
I second that motion.
The only thing that made me pause when I read that, the city council, does it go to?
Oh, no. It goes Board of Adjustment. Sorry about that.
I thought the, one of those said Board of Adjustment. What are the agendas? Maybe this one, I thought I read that once, but.
It's to the Board of Adjustment.
Okay. So do we, do we want to change, yeah, do we want to change that somehow?
Just make the motion, yeah.
Okay. Sorry to make you do that again.
I shouldn't have known that anyway after all these years. Move that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval of the Special Provisional Use Amendment at 301 First Street Northwest to Board of Adjustments.
I second that motion.
All right. So that motion has been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Can we have a little more discussion before we go?
Sorry.
Sorry.
No, absolutely.
I, I really think that something like this, because it doesn't have a time limit on it, really should have a time limit on it. I feel like the assumption that this is a forever building at that location along First Street, adjacent to a school that is actually a lovely building and the church has spent years developing a, you know, a really quality set of stuff, that this being a permanent kind of structure on that parking lot without a time limit on it, and that it potentially houses kids in a building that is not, has no plumbing, no water, no storm safety, you know, it's probably not an ideal kind of structure long-term for kids, that maybe it's not appropriate to have it have a no-end game kind of a situation.
So question, would there be an appropriate distance from that building to a permanent structure? I mean, how did Cary School use that? And it was.
Well, I wasn't on planning, when this went through Cary, I was not on planning and zoning, but you're right, Cary.
It is, it was physically closer to the permanent structure.
It was closer to the permanent structure. It also wasn't visible from the street. They had a lot bigger acreage on which to put a building like this. It isn't a kind of, it doesn't have the same presence on the street. It was behind the building. You didn't even know it was there unless you went back there. And there's a lot of different issues associated with putting it at Cary or Southeast where there is one. And while I.
I don't even remember it ever coming to.
I don't either.
And I was on here, so I, I don't even think it ever came to the B and Z at the time on either one, to be honest with you.
I mean, I just feel like without a time limit on it, I really struggle to support it.
What would make you more comfortable, I'm curious? Would it, if it were closer proximity to the.
No, it's, it's the timeline thing. It's the idea that this is a permanence, potentially a permanent solution.
So if there was a term?
What would you recommend? Just curious. I'm just curious. Like five years, 10 years?
I mean, there's a major investment in this, for St. Paul's to do this. They purchased it. They have to put in all the footings. I mean, I know what's involved in that, and it's a pain in the neck, and it's probably, it's awful to actually, but you have to tie it down to what you do. I get that. So it seems like a five-year commitment maybe would be appropriate, but without the sort of dollars understanding of it. And also, if St. Paul's is going to continue to grow because of whatever reason, I think that the, that they should be forced to think about housing kids and school differently than a portable structure, and that without a time limit on it, it doesn't necessarily play that card.
In your, I'm curious, in your professional opinion, what is the lifespan of a building like this?
Well, maintenance and the way they take care of it probably affects that.
Yeah.
I mean, I know that there are companies that move these around from school to school over time. Many school districts rent them. It's a, it's a standard frame house construction.
Just on piers.
On piers.
You know, I think, you know, Ron stated that, you know, this kind of came up very fast for them, and I think they also are doing some planning for the future. I guess, Ron, what do you think you'd be comfortable with? You know, it's five years. I mean, I know you're planning, but by the time you plan and then get into the putting a specific plan together and getting it built.
I'm really sorry, a pain in the neck.
She did find it at Cary School also. It's hard because I know that a building project takes time. The last building project St. Paul's did actually started in 2008 in the planning stages, and construction was completed in 2014, given fundraising, architects, design, all of the things that had to go into that particular one. I would, I would be cautious at a, a five-year that we will probably come back at some point saying, okay, here's our plan, but we need an extension or something like that would have to happen. I don't know if this would be the board that that would come to or it'd come to some other entity on that. To be honest with you, I hope it's something more permanent also in less than that period of time. I have no intentions to not continue to push for that. But this is again allowing us the flexibility to see whether or not the future still looks the same a year or two from now as it does right now. Yes, it is going to be expensive to move this building into location. Given what it takes to build a new building, it's very inexpensive, but yes, we are putting a fairly good investment in the move, the insured movers, you know, all those things, footings, getting it hooked up, that will take us some resources.
I'm a little curious, sorry, more questions, why that location as opposed to, say, on the north side of the, I know it's not adjacent to the school, right? That's probably why.
Actually.
But those were residential properties, and this is essentially a residential building.
This was, this is actually within probably 30 feet of where the parsonage was that used to be in that green space.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Before my time.
Yes. The parsonage sat on the green space just to the east of this location, and actually this is all residential.
Which is why.
Over the years, the homes have come down. The Avenue of the Saints Veterinary Clinic actually sat where the school currently sits and was moved out there in 1964 as they started taking property ownership. There were parsonages that have come down. There has been numerous.
I'm curious, is the water and sewer still stuffed in?
We know that there is a sanitary sewer dead center of the parking lot to the north. That's a manhole cover that exists of sanitary sewer that runs to the west. We suspect all the other was abandoned, but we have no, there is no residual knowledge of exactly how that was done in the current leadership of congregation. So it is really unknown, but we assume.
No public record?
I haven't investigated that. Like I said, I haven't spent much, I've been trying to just get ducks in a.
You've had a lot on your plate.
Yeah.
Well, probably, if probably no public record, you'd have to find somebody that was on staff at that time. was on staff at that time at the city.
We, we suspect most of it had been curb-cut is our guess, and abandoned at the curbs. We know anything that was out in First Street, or First Avenue, First Street, when they redid that was all terminated and made new through that area. And we don't, we suspect very little exists in First Street. In our estimation, we think it probably came off of our First Avenue. We don't think there is much. We think it came off First Street because we know there was terminations there.
Could you live with 10 years?
I'd be happier with five if we're negotiating.
If you decided with five, you're basically guaranteeing that you're going to see them again in five years, asking for more.
But I think that maybe that's appropriate, because I think that then you have a better projection of what's going to happen with the educational savings account and where the future looks.
Well, they may have a better idea of how they're going to use them, because right now they have multiple options, including education and church.
Is there cost involved with, if we were to set a limit and then have them come back? Did you get any feedback from the list of neighbors?
Nope.
Yeah, you're still going to go through Board of Adjustments, and they might be...
They could be worse than me.
I know. That's what, I was just getting to you.
Well, it's, it's not about you necessarily, Kate, it's a, it's a good point, and I think it's a good discussion that we're having here. Excuse me. So how do we want to proceed as a commission?
I would recommend that we put a time limit on it, and maybe we can just agree to that if you guys are open to that.
Have you had any discussion with Pete?
No. I mean, the time limit, if you put a time limit on it, to Stephanie's point or Dave's point, we would know how it was being used, and then we would have a really different set of information. If there are no kids in it, you know, all day, and you find you use it for adult meetings or some other kind of use, then it's a very different conversation than a long-term space for kids without running water and sanitary services.
Well, if it's not classroom use, if it's media center, you know, or meeting space, you know...
I mean, I would, I would see it a little differently if it was used other than regular classrooms for a long-term use.
At Cary, that was fourth grade.
Yeah, it was, it was the upper grade levels because they thought that those kids would more easily be able to manage moving from one to the other, which is why I asked the question.
And it was close proximity to the building.
Yeah. I mean, it's still kind of awful in January.
Yeah. All I know is my grandson was in that building, and he was very happy because they had air conditioning.
That's true.
Well, I think, I, I understand the term limit, and I think I could live with five because I'm guaranteeing you that it does have to be renewed. We're probably going to renew it with some specifications, so I mean...
What's the harm in asking them to come back in five years and have a conversation with us?
But I'm going to, I'm going to tell you, if it were, Board of Adjustments is going to be tougher than what you...
Oh, so you're suggesting we go with 10 because they're going to be...
Well, no, that's, you know, no, but...
So that is the thing, too, is I suppose this is just a recommending body, so Board of Adjustment gets to decide. They can probably decide the five years versus the 10 years or no time limit.
Yeah.
So we could recommend a time limit, and they ultimately make the decision.
Right.
Yep.
So we could amend the motion to recommend a time limit.
So, yeah, essentially amending the amendment, the special provisional use amendment, to allow for this building to be for a period of five years. So the motion can still be the same, but the amendment is changing to include a time limit.
Do we recommend a, a number, or do we recommend a time limit?
I would, I would probably say put a time, put, you recommend a number. Since you're wanting a time limit, I think it's best to have what the commission feels the best time limit would be.
So do you want us to restate the motion with the time limit?
No, you just amend it.
Wait, restate the time limit?
So I mean, if you want to move the motion to amend...
Then I would say we amend the motion to bring it back for discussion in five years.
Well, let me ask you this. Should we say, move that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval of the special provisional use amendment allowing the portable classroom building for a period of five years to the Board of Adjustment? At the end of the five years, maybe they decide they don't need it anymore, then they don't have to come back to us.
I think that that's how it should be stated, yes.
Okay.
So you're going to make that amendment?
I will make that amendment.
Okay.
Do you want me to state it again? You said it really well.
Aye.
I'll take it from the minute.
Okay.
Okay, so we have an amended motion. Do I have a second for that amendment?
I will second that.
Okay, so the amended motion has been moved and seconded. Any other discussion before a vote?
So you realize you've got two votes, vote for the amendment, and then you got to go back and vote for the...
The original motion?
Original motion, yeah.
Okay. So starting with the amendment that we just discussed, all in favor, answer with aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Sorry.
Aye.
Aye. I lost my train of thought there, I'm sorry. Any opposed? Same sign. Hearing none, amended motion passes. Now with our...
The amendment passes.
The amendment passes.
The amendment passes.
So then you have a new motion.
Now we got the motion to approve.
The motion.
As amended.
As amended, okay. So do we, do we need to state it again, or does it, we go with what was stated previously?
Yeah, it's basically what was, when I made the motion for...
As amended.
And then we passed the amendment, so it's just, yeah. You're voting on the motion as amended.
Okay, so I would like to call a vote on the motion as amended for this SPU to the Board of Adjustment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hearing none opposed.
We need a motion and second for that.
No, we did.
You had the motion.
Oh, you did first, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So that was the user and gardener.
You had the motion, the second, then the amendment, and the second.
Got it.
Then we had vote. I heard ayes. Any opposed? Same sign. Hearing none, that motion passes. So the motion and the amendment.
Got it.
Is anybody going to retrieve John?
I was just going to go get him and pour down on that cake.
He's going, what the heck? We're leaving.
They were, we're done.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Good discussion.
Well, if this keeps going, you know, they're going to have to...
That's my point.
They're going to have to be doing a lot more, you know, planning for a building or whatever, so... See, I wasn't worried because I didn't think, you know, it's not going to be that long. Anyway, because they, you know, they got to justify the cost of putting a new building, you know, and that's not easy when you don't have tax on it either.
It is definitely hard for them.
Welcome back.
Okay.
All right, so we're on item...
Did she tell you what we did?
We're on item F, Regular Business, which is the modification...
Think of a preview.
...to Chapter 103 subdivision, Section 103.7086 and 103.7095. Paige, can you walk us through the memo on this?
Yes, so in that subdivision section requires public water system and public sanitary sewer system to be extended all the way through the lot to the next property for future development. In this case, the owner is requesting an exception to that code section, so he can just put it into his within agreement in place that when the next property develops, he would extend it at that time. As you will see in the attachments, we do have a memo, or should have a memo, from our Public Works Director as he has worked through this with the property owner.
Does that become a lien on the property? Well, the agreement says it runs by them. No, I know, but it...
Not a lien necessarily, but the agreement will be recorded.
Okay, I just, you know, because I think that sometimes gets confused, you know...
Right, yeah, it won't be an actual lien against...
Yeah, but it's, it's, well, it does become a, it, it is because if...
Oh, I, okay.
I mean, it does, because if it would ever...
Change hands.
Change hands...
It stays with.
And it comes up there, and so, yeah, it, it could be addressed as that, but I, I just want to make sure, I think, well, there's, yeah, that he understands that, you know. Do you understand what we're talking about?
So, let me back up and ask a, I want to ask the question differently, I think. So the, the issue is running sanitary across the width of the property today versus later when it changes hands?
Correct.
So...
Well, I think it's not when it changes hands, it's when there's another development that goes in next to it.
Oh, right.
Well, I'm just reading this. The exception agreement provides the necessary language to require any subsequent land owner of parcel, bunch of numbers, to install public utilities to the edge of the property if the need arises.
So basically, if he sells it, that doesn't nullify the agreement. The agreement is it's still in place, that new owner is still responsible to bring water and sewer through the lot.
Yeah, it's like the last, last sentence of the agreement says it for subsequent heirs or property owners, et cetera. So, so my question on this one, if I can ask here, are we talking north-south on the parcel or east-west?
East-west.
So, so there's a, a house to the west, is the, would this be directly to that?
Correct.
Intersecting where the house is, basically?
Yep.
So does this mean that if there's development to the west of that house, he would have to put it across his property, and then the house would also have to put it across their property?
Correct. So the thought is that house at some point will probably turn into development of some sort. So once that or somebody to the west of that house develops, this property owner would bring it to the edge of their lot, and then it would be the new developer getting it past that point, whether it has to go...
The new developer would put it through the existing house property?
If they, yeah, if they got a...
Well, yeah, that's the question I have, is if Crumwede develops their property, has a development for it, and they need the water extended, the house may be staying, who's going to pay for it in front of the house? Will Mr. Crumwede or whoever owns that, develops that property to the west, have to pay for that stretch across the house? I mean, that really isn't part of this issue. We know that, you know, Dale is going to have to do it in front of his, but, you know...
Yes, it would be on that new developer than at Crumwede if he develops.
Or is he going to come to the city and say, well, you know, because we have, the city has been managed to do some of those, get themselves into those binds as well, you know?
I know what you're saying. I mean, yeah.
I mean, that's really not relative to this issue. That's some future question, but, you know...
That's what Paige has to be strong and tell them.
So if city services are within 300 feet, they're required to hook onto it. That house lot looks to be 200 or right at. So yes, the new development of Crumwede's property would be required to get it to them. I mean, it would probably entail, rather than going across their private property, you would go down into the right-of-way, obviously, to connect to that way, but yes, that new developer, that's part of the development cost, anything within that 300 feet.
Well, I guess as long as this agreement, as long as the Public Works is in agreement and it is recorded, it's clear that it's binding, I guess I don't have a problem with it, and I would be willing to make the motion to approve it.
I'll second it. Any other discussion?
So is it clear what path that extension would take? I mean, I'm assuming he has to take it somewhere onto his property for his own access. Is it going to be clear that, you know, how it's going to be extended to the end of his property?
Yes, I believe in there it says east-west, and then they would provide us a public utility easement. But I, I would have to check with Justin. If they chose to go down into their right-of-way versus on his property, given the easement, they'd still be getting through that.
Well, the right-of-way, it's automatic, so...
Well, I mean, it describes it, eight-inch, eight-inch, and public easement, and a fire hydrant, termination, I mean, it's, it's in the agreement.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Once again, any other discussion? Seeing none. Say, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hearing none opposed, that motion passes. Okay, moving on to item two under Regular Business. Plaid of survey for parcel two located at 1024th Street Southwest, Waverly, Iowa. Paige, can you walk us through this agenda memo?
Yeah. Okay, so James and Carla Jansen are requesting this plaid of survey. I believe it's a total of five parcels that they own. Some of them came from the recent city vacations, others came from DOT, recently got rid of a lot of their property adjacent to their right-of-ways. In that, they use all of the spaces they own, they would like to combine it all into one personal, or, excuse me, one parcel. This also came up because they would like to put a shed up, a garden shed up in there too, that would be on a different parcel than their primary house is. So we agreed that it probably best to plot everything as one since they're, use it as one.
Okay. So that actually answered one of my questions.
The shed, will that work in there okay? I mean, once they're combined?
Yep, we, and this will come into conversation later on with kind of the front and the side yards. This is the one that I did work with Pete Lampy, that we got a location worked out with the Jansons that would not require a variance.
Okay.
I was surprised it hadn't been, when Bernie Smith moved that thing there back in the 90, when was it, 90, or is it late 80s or 90?
He moved it, I think, in 89.
89?
We bought it in 92.
Yeah, I was surprised that Bernie didn't...
Well, that one to the east, that whole parcel, they just got from the DOT. And then the drive, we just, that was just vacated. So, yeah, a lot of it just became into their ownership within the last six months or so.
Because that came from across the street, if I remember right, didn't it?
Yeah.
You mean, from the cemetery?
No.
Off the street to the...
To the east.
The North McDonald's.
It was, you got to go, like, so where McDonald's was, I think, if I remember right...
To their unity point clinic.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Man, stop and think.
To the east is the cemetery.
Okay. Well, that answered one of my questions, I saw the storage building was on the application and I was just curious how that played into it, so that makes sense, so I appreciate that. Other discussion with the commission on this one, plata survey?
You can motion.
I do.
So, if I'm looking at the zoning map, it looks like part of that isn't zoned?
Because it was DOT right-of-way.
Okay, so it doesn't need, will it, how will the zoning change?
So, it'll go into R1 with everything else.
It looks like there's a little corner there that doesn't belong to them. I'm looking at oh nine, oh three, four, seven, seven, oh five, one.
Correct.
Okay, that's still unzoned.
Yep.
Kind of an orphan property.
That goes with the neighbor right down there. So, the south neighbor got half of that entrance and then that little triangle to go with theirs.
That's part of the vacation.
That was part of the DOT settling of those lots, they didn't just vacate.
Okay, I understand.
At some point they-
So, we will work with Scott.
Yeah, that's one of those cases where you almost gotta zoom in more for the name to show up or something, right?
Or click on it, yeah.
Should we make a motion? We just got-
You tried.
You tried.
Now you got me confused. Just briefly. Move that the plan, zoning commission recommend approval of the plat, survey of parcel-
Aye, aye.
What's that, two? Parcel two located, glasses are too dirty, located at 1024th Street Southwest, Waverly, to the City Council.
Second.
All right, motion's been moved and seconded. Any other further discussion before the vote? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say aye. Hearing none, I don't know, I'm off tonight, sorry, that motion passes. Yeah, apparently, accusing each other.
Thanks to you.
Thank you, thank you. All right, item three under regular business, fence code change discussion.
Yeah, so, this, I think, I don't have agenda memo or anything like that, I briefly gave you guys an email of how this came about. Historically, you've considered anything between the front lane of the house and the road to be front yard, so if you have a corner lot, essentially you have two front yards. The more and more I read into the various code sections that are attached, some sections seem to be the opposite of the next section. So, I just had, what was that, contradict, there you go, I could not think of my words. So, I want to get your ideas and take on this, on what, what do we want to allow for fences, what do we want to consider front yards for fences? The question more comes on how that property is situated on the lot. So, if you've got a short and a longer side, if the short side of the lot has your traditional front part of the house, then that longer side, do we treat it as a side yard versus as a second front yard or not? What were a couple of the addresses we looked at for fences?
Well, it seems to me, you know, where it's addressed, that's the front. Okay. If a corner lot, and that's, you know, the other one, you know, the other side that where the address is not, that becomes, to me, a side yard, okay? But I, I could also see why we don't want to have a six-foot fence parallel to the street over there. That becomes, becomes an issue. During my walks during this past week, I've been trying to look at every corner lot and say, "Okay, where would it look bad if we had a six-foot fence in those yards?" And very frankly, it's not real clear to me. I mean, the one lot that I, you know, that I described earlier when I came here was up on Second Avenue Southwest, and I don't know where, you know, there's a three-foot fence there, I keep thinking along Second Avenue, what if that was six-foot, would that be an issue?
Well, is it, is it privacy or is it chain link?
Well, you know, it's, it's a brand spanking new board fence right now and it's three-foot tall. In the backyard, the fence becomes, I think, five-foot, it jumps up. Well, could it have been five-foot along that side? And I would say, yeah, that's the lot, there's no, there's no fence that goes from here to the back lot line, yeah. And it's three-foot along Second Avenue and five-foot on the back side.
Well, if it causes an accident sometime, that's what's going to-
Well, and this is clear out of, there, there's no visibility zone, and I think maybe that has to enter into it too. I mean, it doesn't come beyond the backside of the house. I, I don't know, I, I read this stuff six times and I still don't understand it for sure, but.
Yeah, I, I think that, I agree, I, I read through it several times too and I was excited for our discussion. I think, you know, the, the section that makes the most sense to me initially to amend is the fence code.
Agreed.
Right, and not kind of get into the-
The yard definitions.
Correct.
Because that could be very, very difficult, you know.
Yeah.
Because you could have multiple applications.
And I think, I think that would be the-
You could have multiple applications.
Easiest item, so, yeah, that 100.2, 1.07, that structures on property lines right in there where we would allow taller fences versus the six versus the three.
Yeah, and we really don't spec, we, you know, I think a little bit of it is the type of fence again too, right?
That's the other thing that I've seen very common in these last couple of years, is everyone wants chain link fences, or that's becoming more common, their standard size is four-foot.
Yeah.
So, most people who want fences is because of a dog and they want higher than three-foot fence.
But I can imagine in this case that we were looking at, that, that could be a privacy situation, right? And they, they may have wanted a taller fence for privacy.
And maybe John had a point on that one because they didn't, so it's still on that corner of lot, however, that fence ended at that backside of the house. It didn't become any farther up, so you still have that visual from the turning on the road.
But even, you know, if it, it could have extended up to the front of the house, in other words, the front lot line extended and still not been a visibility issue. I mean, obviously, it couldn't be in the front yard or beyond the front of the house, so, I don't, you know, it's-
I'm curious, I was a real estate appraiser in my previous life and I never ran into this issue in Waverly, but I did in other communities, that the USPS address was not where the front door was.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that it was on the side, on a corner lot. I never ran into this here, have you ever?
Aren't the addresses assigned by the city?
Yeah.
Yeah, we do it.
We assign the addresses, so it is, for the most part, where your front of your house truly is.
And then this, this was in Parker's Park that I ran into it.
Sometimes with duplexes-
Public records said one USPS was a different.
Oh, yeah, interesting.
It's, there are some where the, where the box, the rural box, is on the side street instead of in front, and most of those have got a big sign on them that says, "Well, at the corner of 13th and, and Park Avenue and off of Jade Stone." The rail box is on 13th Street and their address is off of Park.
Okay, yeah.
There's a great big sign on it that says, "This is 1301 Park Avenue," even though it's on 13th Street. So, what are, what do you, what would you like us to do here?
What I think, I think my personal opinion, and I guess somewhat of professional opinion, from what I have seen, I think the most cases where it would make sense to allow a higher fence is on the properties that have that true longer side yard. I think it would make sense to allow for a higher fence in that side and rear yard. The question is just whether you want it all the way up to their property line or not. There's been some instances, I don't know if it was a pass code I came across, some sort of documentation or if it's something that SAP was considering of doing half of the front setback. So, if your front yard setback is 25, you could go 12 and a half, but then you get those kind of weird side yard things. But like you said, with it being, not breaking that front plane of the house, you still should have enough room that it does not become a visibility issue at a corner intersection.
That came up out by Warburg a number of years ago, you know, with the fence and they just decided not to do anything.
So, I know one, pull up at 521, um, no, 321 Fifth, that's the one, southwest. So, this is the one that we were looking at earlier, across from Memorial Park. They did a six-foot fence in that longer side towards Fourth Street. I haven't heard that that's a visibility issue or anything like that, I know some people don't like driving down Fourth Street and seeing the fence, but as far as a safety standpoint, the question becomes the maintenance between that fence, but that could be at a three-foot fence anyways.
If they had taken it all the way to the alley and they were all the way out to the property line, then it could be out of the alley, it could become an issue.
Right.
But they didn't do that, so, I mean, it's-
Right.
Well, I don't know what the address is, but the next house to the south, right, has a very similar.
And there just goes out, yeah, just part, it looks like it corrected that.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's got a slant.
It did slant.
But it's just not on the traffic corner.
That could be too.
It's at the, on the alley.
On the alley.
Yeah.
And frankly, on a busy street like that, I have a little bit more compassion as well.
Right, because it's a busier street, so you want more privacy.
You have compassion? Well, if I could get my neighbor's dog and quit parking.
Yeah, that's, so, okay.
So, I can give you one of the addresses, I've got about three people right now that are holding off on fence permits to see how this conversation goes. Down on Robertson Road, um, 1103 Meadowview Lane, actually. They want to go a six-foot fence all the way out to the, and replace, to the sidewalk, to their property line, I guess, a foot in from the sidewalk.
Where would they start it?
Oh, they're, this is your, you had that, was it going clear out to the corner sidewalk?
No, that Penny Wasepka, that was already in there, that's not, it's the house to the north that's in question, the Kinzess. Um, somewhere partway up the house.
That's what I understand.
Okay.
So, a foot?
West of the sidewalk.
Sure, okay, thank you for direction.
No, okay.
And then, from the rear property line to where, possibly?
I believe it was like halfway up that side of the house.
They're gonna probably want to miss the egress windows.
Right.
What's, what's the address again?
I'm sorry, 1103 Meadowview Lane.
Just flip your script, she'll just see.
Well, I, I have, I have a funny one.
So- Crazy question, would they adjoin the neighbor's fence?
I would have to, I'm, there might be easements back there because that neighbor's fence is built off the property line a bit.
So, they would.
Well, the next one over is connecting.
Yeah.
So, potentially, if they connect to them, I require them to give a written notice from the neighbor saying that's okay.
Do they have to have a survey before they put a fence in?
They don't, but that is one question that we always ask, is if you are going to your property lines, we want you to have your property pins marked. We also do have that caveat on our fence permit form, that it is the owner's responsibility to mark those property pins.
Because that could make for not very happy neighbors.
Exactly.
Could you go to the, not aerial, but the beacon view of that one again?
Maybe I shouldn't ask this, but-
Could you?
How do you manage?
Pan just a little bit?
Manage the issue of, you know, if you build a fence on the property line, especially wooden fence, how do they take care of it without trespassing?
Okay, that's good view right there.
So, do we need to change that too? Yeah, how do they take care of the opposite side of the fence without going onto their neighbor's property?
We don't require any kind of a statement or easement that, you know, I understand it's my fence, but I've talked to the neighbor and he need, he's agreed to let me on the property to paint it, you know. I know I have a neighbor that purposefully, when he built his brand-new fences, he's two-foot inside his property line so that he can do that, and he even mows that two feet.
There are several other communities, I think we are one of the few that still allow fences to go up to that property line. So, if that's something we want to change at the same time when we're already editing this code, we certainly can, because there's not a lot of communities that allow you to go right up to that property line.
I mean, it, it, it becomes an issue, I know it has.
The, the side effect of holding it back like two feet from the property line then is you have these really weird alleys.
Have a dead man's zone, right?
Yeah, right.
Between the properties.
I mean, it, you know, I mean, sometimes it's handled at the, the next-door neighbor, he takes care of it and keeps the weeds down and sometimes he don't.
If he doesn't have a fence.
What's that?
If they don't have a fence. But if both of them have a fence and there's only four feet in between it.
But it become, inconceivably can become this kind of rat maze of-
Exactly.
Right.
And you'd need a shared maintenance agreement and-
I think we should just stop letting people put fences up.
I don't think that's going to be good neighbors.
So, right, wrong, or different, but I mean, doesn't the parcel, see, nothing is like north-southeast, so the parcel ending in 90, 30, I mean, that's a corner lot too.
They already go out, yeah.
Right, and they have a side yard fence that's six-foot tall.
I don't think that had a fence permit.
You don't think what?
So, they just didn't ask?
Yeah. I think I looked at that one and I don't believe they had a fence.
And what you can't see from the Google photo is that that's off kilter on, in terms of-
Sure, but it's, it's still a side yard fence that's on a corner lot.
But it still goes between the side of the house and the, yeah.
Yeah, you're right, boy, that is hard to see.
Oh, there's a fence.
There's a lot of fences in this particular area.
There are.
So, that is actually a six-foot fence in the side yard?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, that's fine.
Isn't it because of the, of the house, where they developed these fences? Because of the apartment.
Back to the original question, what are you asking us to do?
To help decipher the code. It, right now, it just says three-foot in front yard, six-foot in side rear yard, I believe, where did that go? Yeah, so, historically, anything between the road and the house, staff has considered front yard.
Even on a corner lot?
Even on a corner lot, then you have two front yards. I don't know if that's how it should be or not, and that's kind of a big a question.
Can you have a caveat that there, if you have a-
Corner lot.
Corner lot, that you have to, you're required to have it reviewed?
A fence review?
Yeah. I mean, there's so many weird conditions on a corner lot.
Anytime you want to build a fence, you have to get a permit, don't you?
Yeah.
Even if it's three-foot, two-foot, six-foot?
Yeah.
Well, I guess-
But are you saying it should come to like the board adjustments or?
Well, I'm, I'm just, you're asking to revise the code or the, yeah, so, can the code be written such that side yards, side yard fences are a, are a-
Have to be approved.
They just have to be, well, everything has to be-
Everything has to be approved with a permit.
But the height of the fence- But the height of the fence is a special consideration based on the.
If you wanna go higher than three feet, then do you go to, I, then it's just normal variance. So then code wouldn't need to be changed.
Oh, okay.
So I think the challenge with that though is, I mean, I mean ultimately, I think the code should guide the decision, right, then it's like written, it's black and white and it's consistent.
And so I think where some of our front and side yard comes from is why staffs also as always consider that a front yard is because would you want a garden shed on that side of the road? Or on that side of the house?
What's, what's the setback on those?
Five feet from property lines.
So why is that called a front yard?
Oh, right, so it would not be allowed up through that side of the, right, it would have to go back behind the front plane of the house.
Or side plane of the house, in the case of a corner lot.
Yeah.
Right, so corner lot has a different side yard definition in essence than.
I think the problem is only on corner lots, isn't it?
Exactly.
Yeah, it's only corner lots.
They can do electronic fences then.
I support that.
I.
Doesn't work good for pools, insurance might not like it.
I don't know how to make your burden easier, but, you know, I don't have a problem with, you know, we don't want it in the front yard, and, you know, die, you know, you're the one who will be defining the side yard. It is a side yard, it clearly is, and does it become objectable or not, if it's over three feet? I think the examples we've looked at, I don't, there's, see a problem.
Is it always clear that it's a side yard though? I think that that's what you were saying earlier.
I think that's the big question, is to make sure that they're clear that they are a side yard. And maybe that's just something that's on staff. Um, on this case, I would consider it a side yard rather than a front yard.
Who considers it two front yards?
Historically, staff has considered it two front yards.
But I think the property owner doesn't consider it a front, yeah.
Correct. So if this lot that we're looking at now, if it was half the width, if say it was a eighty-by-eighty lot, then maybe you have more to how the house is situated on it. But in this case, to me, it's the side yard, so it would be.
Yeah.
If they don't like the decision, then you just have to go to the board of adjustments. Yeah, if they don't like your decision, they can ask for variance.
But I'm changing how staff has done it historically, so I wanna make sure others were on board with that. So if we're happy how the code is, and with staff's discretion of saying that's the side yard, then we don't need a change.
Yeah, and to make sure I'm clear on that, so defining that as a side yard on a corner lot allows the fence to extend to the front plane of the house?
It's six-foot tall.
Six-foot tall.
I think the only caveat that I would have is it, it's gotta stay out of that visibility zone, and that's defined in the ordinance too, so, you know.
The front plane of the house, of the house where the fence is going, I feel like I'm beating a dead horse, but in this plane right here, the front plane of the house is the garage, and it's quite a few feet further ahead of the front door plane of the house.
That is true.
And I would think that you wouldn't want the fence to go past that.
The first door, yeah.
Not the garage corner.
But from a visibility perspective, I don't know that it changes it.
Cause it still should be twenty-five feet back.
I mean, where that garage is, is probably correct from the street.
Sure, but would you want a fence to continue out to here and then return down?
It'd be a little strange, but I don't think, from a visibility perspective, or a land use perspective, it doesn't change.
Yeah.
I mean, is it aesthetically nice in this case? Probably not.
But the only person that would be affected by that is the homeowner.
Correct.
I don't think the neighbors, I mean, it's just.
Yeah, that's kind of where I was going.
And, I mean, they've gotta provide access for people to come to their house, whether it's the mail or anything like that.
Well, and, you know, an egress window can't be blocked off, you can't have, it has to be outside a fenced area.
Right.
So, I mean, there are other things that kind of enter into the picture, so.
Do fence, does the fence code require an egress gate with, from, within the yard out of the space?
Sure, sure, yeah.
Well, I know that.
Building code has a certain.
Building code does, but I don't know if that applies to residential building code. I'm just not familiar with residential building code.
Um, yeah, cause it's just not fire code.
I, I mean, I've been told that you can't tight fence in an egress window. You can't.
Right.
You gotta be able to get out of the window and get away from the building.
Unless you've got that gate somewhere in you.
That's why I asked.
Defeats the whole person, for what.
I mean, that's a retroactive potential problem.
Yeah, but is it a tight fence if you have a gate going out or a door going into the house? I mean, I know the purpose.
To get out an egress window, you can't go back into the house.
Yeah, you would get out into the yard.
You gotta get away from the house.
But then you gotta be able to get out of the fenced area.
And so where's the gate located at?
So.
Sorry, that's not what you were asking about, and I went down a rabbit hole of egress within a fenced area. But if we're talking about fence code.
I think it applies good to fence code.
I mean, that, yeah, that's a building code issue, probably, but, yeah.
So in the definition we just said, right, side yard, is that only for fence or other structures? I mean, we're kind of saying for fence, right?
We're saying it for fence, um, but yeah, that does open up the can of worms for, if it's considered a side yard, then why can't I put my shed there by six feet from the sidewalk?
Like the guy next to me who's not a corner lot, right? So I, I just don't wanna put a bunch of decisions kind of into this no-man's land of, you know, case by case, right?
So let me play with it a bit.
It makes sense for fence, I don't know if it makes sense when we say.
Well, the side yard is a whole other story, yeah.
Well, I mean, one of the things you, I mean, I know I said that it's up to you, but, you know, I hate putting that much pressure, we, you know, if we could figure out a way to, to state this, it'd be nice, you, you don't have to deal with it, but also you gotta have a little bit of leeway.
You do.
And, and, uh, cause every deal's different.
Let me see if I can play with some changes before next meeting. Um, that references as it being a side yard for fences. To change something in that one section of the code to specifically state side yard for fences.
Yeah, and I think within the fence code.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I still feel that's where the clarification should go.
Yeah.
Because it, it keeps you out of some of those other discussions.
When you start changing all of them. Okay, yep, I can work on something based off of tonight's discussion.
Whether it's a fence, accessory structure, a deck, you know, it kind of goes down a
Right.
gazebo, I don't know, you know, there's a lot of different scenarios there.
Gives me when I need to bring something next month.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, item G, staff updates, any?
No.
Okay.
If there were, she's not telling us right now.
Commission updates?
So I had something that was brought up to me because I'm also on the airport commission.
Okay.
So the land that, um, for the Tony Corollis dales, that land apparently is within the buffer zone for a proposed north-south runway.
Which land is?
The one we just talked about, Tony Corollis's.
Right next to public services building.
Oh, okay.
Regular business one.
Yeah, um, that that was basically zoned agricultural, and there's concern that we are u, we are taking away some of the buffer zone for a proposed north-south runway. So I believe this, there, there has always been in the plans a plan for where a north-south runway could go in on the airport. And there was land that's kind of all agricultural around that. And that basically the airport is saying that they should have been consulted before that was rezoned. So it's kind of a question of making sure that it's on people's radar when we're putting, when we're dealing with the land in the vicinity of the airport.
Kate, are you pulling up the future land use?
Well.
It's not on the future.
Yeah, it's.
It's not on the future land use map.
It, uh, well, but we've all, I mean, we, in essence, committed that sin a couple more times too, because
Sure.
of what probably his property, when there was a rezoning for the potential Crowell, Reddymix. That's on that same property, in that same classification. And, um, even the bus barn.
Bus barn.
I, I am passing on the complaint to you so that you are aware of it.
So is the school also?
Well, I think the school is too.
I believe so, I think that's.
Well, if this, this, you can, but the runway is, is the blue.
So the runway does show in the blue.
Yeah, but, yeah, so this is what I was, this was I referencing, how does that parcel down there?
So it's well below where the blue is located.
Yeah, how, these two do not seem to match to me.
Well, you, you need to understand that, um, there's a no-build zone on the approaches, it's not necessarily a height restriction. I mean, it's, you know, it's just like what you ran into with the barns and the grain bins on the east, or on the west side.
Could you flip back to what you had?
Across the road, that's becoming an issue.
Yeah, stay there a minute if you.
So I need to zoom out a little. From that west edge of the runway to the grain bins and stuff over there, you're less than six hundred feet. You're over two thousand feet from the edge of that south side of the blue to the north side of Corollis's property.
Yeah, so, so I guess the, 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 the feedback I would like is, is how can we show that, right? How do, this is what we say, we use to make our decisions and gather decisions, there's nothing that says that's in a no buffer zone, anything.
Well, there is an airport zoning map.
That's not on this?
It's not on this, no.
That is.
So then, yeah, so how many different places do people need to live for?
The adopted.
Kate, so you can see beyond the airport.
The adopted airport land use plan, I mean, there is a drawing, but I don't know if that's filed, ever been, you know.
So that should be layered in with the future land use plan, since this is what we use.
And then, the probability that that airport runway will ever be built is a whole nother.
And that's a whole other question that you're talking about.
Because that requires closing that county road, um, it will require relocating the power lines on the the next county road north. It has a whole bunch of baggage with it, and it's going to take a lot of air traffic that might wanna use that runway. I don't think, you know.
It's, it's not my lifetime.
Not, no, not, I agree. It's not in any of our lifetime before it's ever gonna happen. And even then, with Waterloo so close.
Right. But if that is something that they truly want to consider, then yes, it should get put into the next comp plan.
What is?
Um, I know there was discussions with why it wasn't in the comp plan, so I don't know how much more land is supposed to be shown than what's on this current future land use. So obviously it's shown someone, but do they think there needs to be more or less shown? I don't know.
What is the current schedule for the, uh, update to the American, to the airport layout plan?
I have no information about that.
Well, I thought they were going through the selection process to pick the engineer to do that, or the planner to do that. That has not been mentioned anywhere, cause that ALP is more than five years old, I believe.
So I believe they, they have someone that they've kind of made arrangements with to be their, the engineer on staff.
Are they starting to work on the airport layout plan?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. That might be a question to ask where that timing is, and that needs to, I feel strongly that the airport layout plan approval needs to come back to the planning and zoning commission before it goes to the city council. That needs to be a joint process.
Right.
Um, that it's not totally within purview of the airport commission to approve that.
Well, land use is, is what I was.
Well, it's an airport layout plan, and that's.
Well, I understand.
Yeah.
Requires the use of land, right?
Which the airport layout plan and the comp plan should tie hand in hand with each other.
And it's kind of here, the, the blue, but it's, there's more to it than that.
Gotcha.
Yeah, that's important to know, I, I didn't realize that.
Right.
So crazy question, X number of years ago, they did condemnation eminent domain on a couple dwellings up by the airport.
Yeah.
Where were the, what was that for?
It was on the east end.
When they extended that runway.
For that extension.
Okay, okay.
So they could land a little bit bigger planes.
And the whole issue of taking parcel, partial parcels? They ended up having to buy everything up to the county road.
Anything else?
Oh, I did have something else that came up. I was contacted by someone whose house adjoins the Meadow Park subdivision.
Stone Meadows, or?
No, the, the new one that's going in behind, um, Millers?
Yeah.
The Meadow Park, I thought?
Stone.
It's Stone Meadows.
Oh, Stone Meadows, okay. Okay, so, I'm trying, so the person whose property backs up to the retention pond, um, Justin Little. Um, he basically, they're hat, they, the developer came in and basically said they need to, uh, reshape the way the land comes down, uh, because of the runoff. Um, and basically they're going into his backyard and kind of wanting to, to, um, kind of reslope that, cause they're basically concerned that if the water exceeds the retention pond, it's gonna go into his basement.
Correct.
So they want to redo the, um, the, the slope of the land there, and I know they're taking out his fence and re, and that's all on the developer to do. Um, is that something that we should have foreseen in the layout?
Bolton knee caught that in the plans.
Okay.
And so, yeah, that was, knew that was happening before the plans were approved.
Okay.
Yeah.
It seemed to be news, I mean, it was something that he just had meetings with, like in the last couple of weeks, with the developers.
Um, yeah, they were notified, it was earlier this year when I first talked to Justin um, about it, and then they just had like their neighborhood meeting with the developer this last week.
Right, right, so he, he was.
But yes, that was something that was caught in the plans. Um, what happened too is those two duplexes right there, the north side of there, were built at a lower elevation than they should have been as well.
Oops.
And so that happened to event Panther Builders that also built those homes.
I was gonna say that same developer did.
Yeah.
Right, right, so.
Were those fences outside of their property line now?
I'm, I'm looking at two.
That's not correct.
Yep, so those fences are gonna have to be removed. I think the developer might be paying to remove them, but not pay to put them back because they were on the wrong property.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it looks like to me that they're.
And I know the one for sure did not have a fence permit.
Is that accessories building as well, or is that what that is?
Yeah, looks like that is as well too, cause they're both past the sidewalk point even.
It's, it's not a permanent, it's not a, I don't.
Well, it looks like if you go down to the fourth house.
It's such a skid area.
There's also.
Those still have to.
The landscaping, yeah, that's all getting taken out.
They kept them on the property line.
Yeah, and, and even if you go down to the, the sixth one, that, that fence line looks like just past the one.
And that, yeah, that one might be hard to tell based on the aerial, of when this.
Yeah, it looks like the base is okay, but the, because of the aerial view.
Yeah, well, that, that's just hard to see.
When they placed pins, I mean, they're finding pins, I don't think this was one that was on the list that had to be moved.
Okay.
Um, I don't want to be quoted on that for sure, but.
Good times, okay.
Nothing surprises me about those.
Um, but yes, that's, if the case, that's what was on Bolton knee, they were the ones that caught the whole overflow while reviewing the plans for us.
So.
Yeah, cause I'll come right down.
What, what was his request?
Well, he, he was having meetings with people, um, he just wanted, like, to, to know who the right people at city hall to talk to were, um, and he had talked to James who referred him to Paige, so he had to have those conversations. But I think he just wanted someone, other people to know about it. As, as his city council person, I was the person he called to talk about it. Since I was also applying, and so I figured I'd bring it up here.
Perfect. But you, the developer had notified them when the engineering firm realized the issue?
At some point, I don't know exactly when they first notified them, but it was earlier this summer when I first had that conversation with Justin.
Well, the retaining person has to be designed to retain, you know.
So that, that's the other question, is the retaining, the retention area, when it was built, was it built for all the subdivisions? Um, we actually just had a conversation on this today on our development team of we probably need to go and get those elevations after it's built to make sure it's all constructed correctly.
I mean, it wa, it was presumably designed for that all to be developed.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it was. The question is, is, I'm not sure. The question is, is, I'm not sure, I'm not sure anybody went in and took elevations on it, you know, to make sure it's deep enough.
And we might need to start doing that.
Well, and it's limited by the storm sewer that comes up from First Street, you know.
That northeast corner, I think, has a storm sewer.
I mean, the, the thing that empties is in the north, you know, northeast corner, there's a structure there with various inlets at different elevations.
Yeah.
It baffles me of how the property owners got to the wrong lot lines.
Well, there was a retention.
So what I heard.
Probably all of them. They probably thought, okay, this, nothing's going to get developed out there, we're going to.
Well, two, part of what the homeowners told me was that they assumed it was theirs, because when they built the home, they went through and they sawed it everything, so rather than the homeowners noticing where their pins are at, they just went to where the sod ended.
That's always a good plan.
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Assuming that the developer had sawed it to the end of the property, rather than past.
Oh, developer probably didn't know.
Well, I mean.
It was a strip of it used to go.
Now, final plat is approved, all the lot pins are supposed to be in place. And if I was buying a house, I'd say, developer, show me my pins.
Yeah, but you're an informed buyer and there's plenty of people who are not like that, and it's a duplex.
And I have, there's a side, there's a fence there.
Past the sidewalk.
Well, that's, is that a front, is that a front yard or a side yard? I mean, that's on the corner.
That's true. To see the inconsistencies.
It used to be when you did a mortgage that that was part of getting the mortgage and then they, the, they threw that out because it was hard to, to get that part of it done. They were supposed to, you had to have a surveyor come in and mark the pins so you knew exactly what you were buying.
So the sidewalk.
I don't know when they got rid of that, but it was probably around two thousand or somewhere in there, was it? It's been a long time, but it used, years ago.
I wasn't appraising that, but.
Yeah, it used to be that they, they had to.
Mark where was that?
Well, and Littles are not the first property owner.
Correct, yeah, correct.
Oh, I mean, you mean that, or that.
Yeah, Little and Hanson, neither of them are the owners that, that fence in this, the fence in.
First duplex, well, I know the original owner, he had considerable problems with things as well, so.
Yeah, see, there's that example with the high fence too, one that was allowed and others not.
The second unit in, this one, was Arthur Passer.
At least the backside of it.
With no plans.
Moved in.
Okay.
Okay.
To bring us back to the other, very good discussion for commission updates, any other commission updates?
Done.
Okay, just. All right, so we're on I, adjournment.
I move it with adjournment.
Have all these boxes on.